Good evening and.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's work session. Today is two, 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 by the way. And I heard today that it won't come around in that number for another 200 years.
Wow.
So today is February the 22nd, 2022. The time is now 5:00 PM. So the work session, city council, a common to order. We have a few items tonight. Fourth quarter 2021 marijuana sales tax. Item two, American Rescue Plan Act, use of funds. Item three, Los Angeles County Emergency Telephone Service Authority, IGA, agreement amendment request. Item four, discussion regarding naming of public property. Item five, Arkansas River Power Authority appointments, operating committee and board. And item six, sports and recreation director report. And item seven is typical, if there's council has any other items if they want to bring up in the near future. Just to let you know that Ms. Gregor will be attending virtually tonight. She said she had a little bug and she didn't want to spread the wealth around, so. We'll just see her on the screen. So let's go ahead and get started. Item one is fourth quarter 2021 marijuana sales tax items. And I'm not going to get into it now unless, I mean, I'll bring them up if nobody does, but I have some concerns with this time, with the projects this time. Cheryl, do you want to? Bring us up to speed?
Okay. You should have received the marijuana request sheet on Friday. We are, in the fourth quarter, we received 923,644 dollars. Of that allocation amount would be 773,644 dollars. And if we break it out based on the percentages set by council, 65% is available for city projects, which is 502,868 dollars. And we'll discuss that section first. Department heads were asked to be here to support their requests, and you can see that they are here. The amount requested does equal the total available, which is 502,868 dollars. Of that amount, $65,000 is requested by the Main Street Board, and I passed out their request to you earlier this evening. If, I don't know if you want to get into the requests now, or we could move on to the other percentage allocations?
Let's move on with the rest of them, then we'll backtrack.
Okay, so the amount available to be allocated to incentives, incentives is 4%, which is $30,946. If council were to approve this amount, it would add to the total already allocated of 233,961, for a total of 264,907 through the fourth quarter 2021. Nonprofits would be allocated 1%, $7,736, to be added to 58,490,490 dollars already allocated, for a total of $66,226 allocated to date through fourth quarter. And finally, the rainy day fund, 30%, $232,093. Okay?
Okay. Well, like I said, let's just go ahead and get some thoughts as far as some of the projects are concerned. And, you know, being that, let's go ahead and get started, and then we'll, if you have any questions or concerns.
Mr. Mayor, nothing project related, I just wanted to ask Cheryl. Pueblo, they gave $2 million in marijuana tax sales to area schools, PCC and CSU Pueblo. Do we offer any scholarship money for any of the area high school seniors here? From that, from that money?
We have not.
We've never done anything like that. Why though?
Could I?
Sure.
In the beginning of the marijuana, when marijuana was first coming on, there was a, an allocation for schools specifically. And I forget how it worked, but schools were to be provided for. And that was, that was a state program and project, but, but schools were provided for. And so that was one of the reasons why. Also, schools are state funded and, anyway, but I understand your question was for scholarships and things of that nature. But it was just, it was never contemplated in, in the way everything was done and how education was provided for independently.
Because I checked the legality, it is legal to give scholarship money for marijuana tax funds.
Right, I, I understand, but it was, it was never done that specifically. But, but yeah, I'm not saying it's illegal, I just, I think that's the reason why that wasn't done and hasn't been. Just a few more questions.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. That's gone, Ms. Gregor, do you have any questions concerning the allocations?
Muted.
You're muted.
You're muted. Thank you. Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I have a question on the procedure. So I, I know we mentioned in a prior meeting that we wanted to vet these projects. The council would like more detail involved in, so we would know what really, I, I know it explains what the projects are, but I'd like to know in more detail. That's question number one, are we going to do this? I know we can't do it now, but maybe in first quarter of 2022, we can do it. Second question is, on all the requested city projects, is there some type of bidding process that we do? That one project gets a priority over another? Or are all these projects that are listed here, are they the only ones that were presented by staff?
Just to let you know, Ms. Gregor, is that we do have some of the staff that is here. If there's any concerns about any of the allocations, and as they come up, we, if they're here in-house tonight, they can do their, their spiel as to the reason that they need their funding.
Okay, I would just like, I'd like to have the question answered or procedure, for sure.
So every, every quarter, we receive these amounts of funds, and we go through department heads and ask for their input on, on their needs and ongoing projects that, that come up through, through the quarter, so. I, I guess.
Well, I guess asking Mike is, are these the only projects that were presented for payment through the marijuana funds?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. And the parks and, request $45,000 for a slide?
That's, yep, that, that's been on there pre-mayor state of the city address. To replace that side slide, there's actually two slides there. The estimate is $45,000. And that is, that is direct from the playground manufacturer. We're kind of locked into the playground that's there. If you wanted to replace that playground, we're talking in excess of 300, $350,000 to, for, for that playground, so. That is pretty close, and we, we got some preliminary numbers today that were brought in, a little closer. It's close to $40,000 for two slides, a 12-foot spiral cyclone slide and a four-foot, just a regular slide.
Okay, no, I know that was brought up at the city of the city. And, and it, it needs to be addressed, I just didn't know if that was the right figure. One more question on the 2022 Main Street Board, $65,000?
So Cheryl handed out their request form, I don't know if, you probably don't have it, but they, $10,000 is for repair existing kiosks, insert digital screen and buy one large kiosk for commercial and standing mats. Banners, 5,000 for 80 banners on the light posts. $20,000 for Main Street facade grant, 50/50 match. $8,000 for the July 4th festival, advertising supplies and prizes. $7,000 for rodeo and downtown night, I'm sure that's for the Labor Day celebration. Miscellaneous projects and festivals, $5,000. And then Christmas shop local, $10,000, for a total of $65,000 requested.
Okay. Can some of these requests, like for the July board rodeo and Christmas, can't that be delayed for another quarter or two? Or does it have to be paid? Are they just asking for it in bulk?
We've asked all boards and commissions to submit for the year in one quarter, just so that they have it available when the time comes. It just seems to work easier for staff to be able to track and allocate the expenses at the time they incur.
Okay. That's all, I just had a question on that. I have no further.
Yeah, I don't really have a lot of questions, I mean, some of these projects, aren't they taken up in the budget of the, like, the PD flooring, stuff like that? Aren't they in their budgets?
No, they're not.
How did they work it before?
Before marijuana?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, just.
It was not done, so. The PD flooring, I don't know if Charlie's, Charlie's not here.
Well, I mean, I'm just curious how, you know, what we used to do with, before all this stuff was done. I mean, some of these projects, you would think they would be in the department head budgets.
No, we don't, we moved out everything that's like the fixed asset, so that we haven't had to cover general fund salaries, which are the most significant. So anything that's above and beyond what they normally would spend each year, but be above and beyond operating, we ask them to request it through marijuana to keep the general fund balanced.
Excuse me, I'm remembering that Rusty would always ask, what was the fourth quarter in 2020? What was the, the change?
So I do have these available. In 2019, fourth quarter, we collected 945,970 dollars. In 2020, we collected 1,145,405. And then in 2021, we dropped off from both 2020 and 2019, and we collected 923,644.
Okay. Kind of along with Mr. Shu's questions, I, there's, it does seem like to me there are a lot of things in here that should be part of a regular budget. And I understand the reasoning why we've done that. But I think as marijuana revenues drop, we may need to move it back in, so that we have a sense too of what their long-term issues are, the, the things that are coming up that they need money for, and make sure that it's in their budget somehow. I had a question, we, we allocated $5,000 to Christmas decorations in third quarter of 2021. What's the 47,568? What's the, that's a huge amount.
Just to make it bigger and better than what we did. So to continually adding, adding to the city's collection, to be able to decorate more parts of the city. The reason for the request in this quarter is because everything's discounted this time of year, whereas we paid a pretty good sum right before Christmas, plus shipping and trying to get it here on time. Anyway, we're just trying to build that, that collection.
I, I think what y'all did this past year was really lovely, it was, it really did improve things downtown. On the historic Main Street Board, I don't know if you're the one to answer the question, but it seems to me that I would want to know more about what miscellaneous projects and festivals are, and it looks like that's their C priority. So I kind of want to know where that would be going and. That's really one of the questions that I had for that. Also, I wanted to know what, what have we done? What's, have we made any decision at the staff level about putting someone on staff to work as the manager for Main Street? Because when I saw $65,000, I thought, oh, maybe we're allocating money for a staff person.
So that is through Wally's budget, and Don and Wally have been working with Gil Langley from, from DOLA, the Main Street coordinator, and they've put together a pretty good job description. I think they're probably ready to, to put that out. And Wally would take that in, into his budget under ED, trying to keep it in ongoing funds rather than one-time funds, so that we can keep that position, you know, if marijuana goes away.
Okay, alright.
So.
Those are my questions, thank you.
I'm looking at the banners and Fourth of July rodeo and Christmas. It seems like a big chunk of those are advertising issues as far as collecting money. So how do you, I think I want to see a breakdown of your advertising budget, is basically what I'm asking about. And does miscellaneous, sorry, miscellaneous projects, is that just like a cushion for?
I believe it's for upcoming festivals that are not talked about, Santa Fe Trail Days, Bicentennial, I don't, I don't know. And actually, Penny isn't here to discuss further, and we can get her here before council to give you more detail if you'd like.
Yeah, I definitely would love to see a better breakdown of your advertising budget, because we can deal with that with.
Okay, it's, it's not mine, it's the Main Street Board.
Sure. I was wondering, what, what is the OOR promotional MDSE?
It's Office of Outdoor Recreation. Jared is here, if you'd like to come up and answer.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yes, sir.
What is it?
What is it? So TOOR is Trinidad Office of Outdoor Recreation. The $5,000 requested is just for promotional materials for like stickers, shirts, hats, stuff to promote the Trinidad True Outdoors messaging. And so that stuff would be available for, at city events, different opportunities where we can just give out those kinds of stickers, those kinds of stuff that just promotes outdoor recreation identity and such like that.
Okay. This might also relate to that, but I was looking at the historic Main Street, and I know that's not your area of responsibility.
Sure.
But the historic Main Street Boards, the 80 banners, is there, it'd be really nice if there could be some steps taken to have like a cohesive response to all of the new things that are coming up in Trinidad, like the mountain bike on art, the gravel races. I mean, if, if, like, even that, what you just mentioned, the promotional MDSE, I mean, if that could all kind of be like cohesively focused towards our overarching goal of supporting those sort of new events, I think that'd be something super valuable. I mean, it's just not.
Kind of like a cohesive marketing plan, where we take everything that we've got going on and market a one fabulous package?
Yeah, that seems like a great idea.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
Okay. And then this might relate to, I appreciate that, that, this might relate to the next question. With, with regards to the director of the historic Main Street Board Director, is, is that, are we still needing to approve that? Or is that?
That's a position that we're going to incorporate into economic development's budget.
Okay, so it's already existing in the?
Well, we're going to juggle some numbers to.
Okay, so we're taking steps to work towards that in the existing budget?
Correct.
Okay. It had, oh, the, I appreciate it, that's all the questions I have.
You bet, you bet.
Can you explain the, and I'm sorry, I have a feeling that I should know this, the Boulevard Edition property, two lots at 1,500 each?
That, that just, that just cropped up. We had a local resident who owns two lots in the middle of the Boulevard Edition Park. And he came forward and said, I have these two lots and, and me and my partner want to sell them. So contacted Sky and Sky said, well, how much? He said, about 1,500 a lot.
Oh.
So that's two lots that are, that area is all lots and blocks, it was planted in the early 1900s. And there's two lots, 25 by probably 150. And they're in the middle of the park, so.
The sale of that property would not be subject to an election because it was never used for a municipal?
No, we're not selling it, we're purchasing it, he's offering it for.
But I mean, if, if the sale had ever come up?
If we ever sell Boulevard Edition Park, I think it would be subject because we've created a municipal park.
Okay, that clarifies that, thank you, Mike. I, I appreciate that. That's all the questions I have.
Well, I've got some concerns, people. I don't, to be honest with you, I don't agree with that $47,500 for the Christmas decorations. I think if the citizens of the city of Trinidad saw that, I think we would get blasted. I'm okay with 15,000, maybe even 20 at the most, but I'm not, I'm not okay with $47,000, I think that's excessive. I know the reason why you're trying, they're trying to save money because of the time of the year. But I just, I just feel like 47,000 is just too excessive. And I think that we build on Christmas decorations year after year after year, I think that's, that's what we've been doing. This, what's this structural gear for the fire department, what is that?
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Good evening.
How are you guys? So my budget, that Chief Howard left me, gave me $16,000 in equipment, to buy equipment. We're hiring four guys and it's $4,000 for each guy, just supplying with a bunker coat, pants, boots, helmet, a hood and some gloves. So that's going to wipe that whole budget out. So we were talking, maybe I'll come to get some marijuana money to kind of outfit these guys. And then Chief Howard had actually came to you guys last year to buy helmets. I think there was 13 helmets and four bottles, do you guys remember, including that?
Which one, no?
There was 13 helmets, structural helmets, and so the helmets arrived, but they don't have the shield up on front of them. So those helmets are sitting in the basement right now, so I don't know why they didn't order the, the shields, but that's $3,000, so.
Okay.
And then we need to buy masks for our new guys at $600 apiece, and then everybody needs new gloves, and they're $110 apiece.
Okay, so you said that the, the budget that you had that Chief Howard left you was how much?
It's 16,000 for this year.
Okay, 16,000, so.
Just buying the jacket and the pants and the boots and the helmet and the hood gloves for four new hires is $16,000. So then I have no money left to replace other equipment.
Okay. So that, so you're probably going to have a little excess afterwards with that 25,000?
No, all this 25,000 is spent.
Okay. Now, what is the difference between that and the wildland gear?
Okay, so on the wildland gear, when I was offered this position, I kind of surveyed my guys. I have this thing where, like, I expect my guys to know their job and do their job and have the equipment to do their job, it's kind of a funny thing about me. But half of my guys aren't equipped to fight wildland fire. So we need to get them up to speed on all their paddocks, their shirt, their pants, their boots, their shelters. Shelters are $700 apiece, that's a little aluminum thing you dive in if you're overrun by fire.
Where do you anticipate that we could have wildland fires? That you would participate?
All around our community, I think. Our whole town is urban interface, and if anything comes off of that mesa, it's coming into town, so.
So the gear that you guys have doesn't cover that, you know, some of the other gear?
The structural gear, if they were to go out and fight a wildland fire, they would die of heat exhaustion because it's too heavy. Structural gear is three layers, where wildland gear is just like a nomex shirt and nomex pants, it's single layer. And then they have to have a pack to carry their shelter on if they're overrun by fire. And then you jump in the shelter and it's like a baked potato, right?
So you're talking about like what happened in Boulder?
Right, yeah. And, and that kind of correlates with the saw class. We had some trees come down in town, asked the guys, hey, go cut your trees, and half of them don't know how to use a saw. So we're putting that money into some training on sawyers, so everybody is qualified to use a saw.
Explain the, with the water rescue equipment request.
So that one, and we were kind of leery about this last year with this guy floating his tubes down the river. He said he had 90 people and then he was up here in front of you and said he's anticipating 500. Right now, we have no water rescue equipment or training. But if we're going to put people in that river, I feel if something does go south, they're going to call us, and we probably need to be educated in rescuing people and having equipment to do that.
So how many people, how many people will you?
16 of us, everybody in the department will be trained.
So let me ask you this, the reason why you would need 16 people trained instead of just a, a target group that would be available?
Because we work 48 on and 96 off, so if I train those guys and they live out of town, how long is it going to take them to get here? I need everybody trained to one level in our department because there are only 16 guys. If I had 100 guys, wouldn't be a problem, but we're doing our job with 16.
Okay. Next question isn't for you, it's actually for the PD. It's at CDW Toughbooks times four? Right. Charlie, are you out there? If not, so we're gearing up and we have more officers. We have actually five new officers, so that Toughbooks is, so they can have their recording in their cars. Those are computer reporting. So does that mean we're going to have to buy five new cars for these new officers?
Before, before they were sharing the Toughbooks, and there was an issue with sharing, and I can't remember why he said that. So this enables every officer to have their own Toughbook to be able to plug into all the vehicles. They're not new vehicles, they're just new officers.
But, you know, new officers, and each time that we buy, we get a new officer, he always wants a new car or a car for a, an officer, and that's another, that's another day's discussion. Those come out of the fleet. Right. Yeah, we.
He doesn't.
I think we're fully staffed, I think we're still too short, too often short of being fully staffed. I just, I still just don't get why it's, there's such a difficult time sharing, that's a concern, I, I don't know.
That would be a question for him.
Yeah, it'd be.
As far as vehicles, he doesn't add vehicles because of staff. He adds two vehicles a year to keep the fleet updated. He adds two vehicles a year to keep the fleet updated. So every year, he's purchasing two vehicles.
Yeah, and another thing about it is he has come to us in the past asking for a new vehicle because he's got new officers and because he doesn't, all these officers think that they had, need to have a car to take home. And that's an issue that has cropped up with some of the previous councils. Why can't they use, you know, you know, why can't they?
Their own vehicles.
You know, why can't they have one vehicle or some, you know, not everybody have their own vehicle, put it that way. Anyway, that's, that's a discussion for another day. But I just questioned the, the, the sharing, I just, I don't know, it just seemed like they're, I've seen the police department having a difficult time sharing things.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I can maybe shed some light on that for you.
Okay.
So, when I, when I started two years ago, what we ran into with the current Tough Books is when we had equipment damage or anything of that nature, we had trouble finding, you know, who to hold accountable for it. So I believe it was the first year that I was here that we decided, I spoke with the chief from the IT Department and with the police department, we decided to assign a computer, much like city council has an assigned Chromebook, so that if something happens to your Chromebook, I know, I know who to go talk to. If if you're having an issue with it, I know to go talk to you about your Chromebook. So we decided to do the same thing with the police, with the officers. So that if Officer Bellotti has an issue with it, I go talk to him and I don't have to talk to three or four other different people to try to resolve an issue. So part of the, part of the reason for requesting individual laptops was for accountability because they are expensive pieces of equipment. And they share vehicles, probably assign a laptop to, it makes things a little easier, at least for me, and it helps keep the accountability up.
Okay, I understand, that does make sense.
James, the chief is here now, so thank you.
I apologize.
You're welcome.
Like I said, you know, the explanations so far are okay, I'm still going back on that Christmas decorations. I, I.
Okay, but do you want an explanation for the Tough Books now that the?
Well, he kind of explained the reason being is accountability or if something is not right.
I understand, I think the chief came down here probably to answer some of his questions, so.
Got confused at the time, I apologize, but that's what, that's what's for Mayor.
Okay. And I can understand, you know, the reason for the accountability because that's one of the things that we wanted. And like I said last week when I had my, when I gave my State of the City address, I did state that we want to make sure that our police department and our fire department is very equipped properly. And as long as there is a sound reason why, you know, this equipment is being requested and it's just not frivolous, and I can understand. James gave a good answer for the reason for that. Like I said, the only thing that I said, I'm still gonna go back on the Christmas decorations. I'm not sure what context, I still think that it's a little excessive.
Well, I, I think it's not, I mean, I know it's a little high, but we've never, it's been years before we really bought anything. And and you need to look at the price of what good Christmas decorations are. And I think by buying that now, it's a little bit cheaper than buying them on next year. And then we can drop our, our fees down, I mean, our contribution to Christmas decorations over the next quarters and stuff. But as far as I see right there, we have the money for it. And I, I mean, I would be for it. I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's kind of a, everything's so high anymore and, and it really did look great, the Christmas stuff that we did have up. And I think if we put a little more out, it just makes the town a lot more nicer.
We do have a group called Operation Save Christmas, and they're the ones with the hopes and aspirations of these decorations. I'm sure we can bring them forward if you like. One of the sites we'd ask you to take a look at is Estes Park Christmas Decorations, and that's kind of what we're looking to try to achieve. We probably can't do all of it because it is expensive, but our goal is to just, you know, explode at Christmas. But again, like I said, if you would like to meet with this group, once this is approved, they'll start having meetings to figure out what, what items to buy.
I guess, I guess the thing that I guess, what I'm gonna say, you know, if I go forward and I approve myself personally on this as a vote, I just don't want them to come back for another forty-seven thousand next year.
That's, well, that's what I was thinking.
You know, and just like some of these other expenditures, I think that it's time that we start looking at other things that maybe we can, that we. Well, on the Main Street, Main Street Board budget, repairing the kiosk and the eighty banners, I know that that has been discussed with tourism. Do, is that the actual amount, ten thousand dollars for those banners?
So what I'd like to point out is that this, these groups are meeting quarterly to coordinate so that not all of them are spending separate pots of money on advertising, and they're not all spending money on different kinds of banners. They're required to coordinate and make sure that we're not double expending items that, you know, one group can be responsible for. But as far as the kiosks, again, this is the Main Street Group's request. I, I didn't ask her to be here, that's my fault, and I can get her here next time if you'd, if you'd like.
I understand that, you know, the kiosk, that's something, matter of fact, there's this one kiosk that's right here, that's, it's in pretty bad shape. And I know that was a discussion they had about replacing the kiosk. And then I guess they're looking for an additional one on commercial.
Yeah.
And so I can understand that because we're trying to get people to recognize what's, what's there to do, you know, in Trinidad when they come through here.
I just, just one, Aaron, you asked about the banners, putting tough. If I'm reading that right, is that, as an artist, aren't they doing exactly what you want by highlighting activities in Trinidad? I mean, that's what it says right there, they're gonna make the best, an artist is gonna put down what, what highlights we have in Trinidad, events and stuff like that?
Yeah, I just, I just.
But I mean, I'm just curious, is that what you kind of meant too? Or are you thinking something different on the banners?
No, I was thinking that just, it would be nice to make sure it was a cohesive effort that, I mean, that the activities highlighted are really, I guess what I'm saying is it would be nice to see a cohesive messaging. And, I mean, that, that takes a lot of collaboration between multiple groups, I'm sure. So just, just difficult because, you know, I mean, I, I guess what I'm hoping is if we're drawing people, say, to our town, I hope we're not just, it would, it would be great, this is the best way to say it, I'm sorry. If we have people coming for an event, I think banners should be going up for like the next event. Not, not banners celebrating the current event because we want to continue to draw people. So if people are here for the Fourth of July, it'd be great if they could see events for the bike race or for Yolanda Indians in the fall. If, if we just have a response like that, because then, you know, we can, we can get those people to come back for.
So what you're saying, you want separate banners for each event?
Yeah.
But that would really.
Mayor, council?
Yeah.
I have.
Maybe Karen, she's on that board.
I'm sorry, I, I haven't answered.
All right, Karen.
I think it's Councilman Williamson's concern.
Yes.
I think, I was at the Historic Main Street Board meeting when they discussed these banners. And I think what they're gonna do is put just various banners on each light pole, like Trinidad triggers, Fourth of July, Fisher's Peak State Park, Historic Downtown Trinidad. They're, they're putting highlights of what tourists would like to see all through Trinidad. It's not gonna be one specific event and then take them down and put another one. That was my understanding, if they're gonna do it, then would still, I don't know, because I missed the last meeting.
Thank you, no, that, that makes sense, I mean, I think it just makes sense that we give some thought to a cohesive messaging. And, and that sounds like we're heading in that direction, I would think.
I think what would be good is for the meeting next week, if that's when this comes forward, is to, if you can ask that group to give a list of all the different banners that they're going to have made. That way we know what kind of banners are going up, or if we have any additional suggestions. The facade project, and I know that was a, some money that we had applied for. Mr. Valentine, do you know, I know, we asked Terron Marshall if that program might be coming back. She thought it might be, but I'm not sure if they've made any decision on that, do you know?
I have not heard if, if they've made any decision on that, Mayor, but that is, I believe, separate and aside from what they're trying to do here. There's, there is some money from Main Street, Colorado Main Street, that they can use this to match. I will say that our Urban Renewal Authority also has a facade program that they, they are trying to help fund. Unfortunately, it's not a lot of people are applying.
So I think that, my personal opinion, if Urban Renewal is doing this and we're doing this, and then another program comes along, I would say that we just let Urban Renewal Authority do it. I think that that's up to them, and I think that.
I will talk to the Main Street Group and Kenny and give more clarification on that because it's a B priority under their priorities.
And at the same time, isn't that part, would that be part of Economic Development's budget? Because Main Street, I know, is, they've talked about the facade program that they had and of course the money went away, or we didn't qualify for it. But I think that if they're, if Tora is doing it, I think we let them do it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Council, I have another addition here, I'm sorry. I took the date that I wasn't gonna be there to be talking to you, I guess, I'm sorry. But I know with the, I think the two grant programs between Tora and Main Street Group are somewhat different. And I really don't know specific details, but I know with Tora, it's more of a structural grant. Well, as the Historic Main Street Group wants to do grants for superficial maintenance, like painting, take for instance where the, the light plays are being done on Main Street, the old JCPenney Building. They need money just to paint the, the trim on that building. So the two, there is a difference in the two programs. One is for extensive work and the other is not. So you might want to talk to both of those individuals, but I think they're two specific grant programs.
Okay, I think that we need to have them both here. The rodeo downtown night festival advertising supplies. How involved have they been with, with the, I guess, the rodeo group that puts on the rodeo?
I think the past two or three years, well, COVID years. The past couple of times that they've had downtown nights, like they used to way back, Main Street Group has been putting those on, whereas the Roundup Association does the fair and the dances and everything for the Labor Day. So I think that this, they've, they've come to us before for the event they have. Generally, it's down on Seager Street.
Okay, the miscellaneous projects, like I said, those, that could come up, anything could come up as far as that goes, and I can understand that. The Christmas shop local total, talking about advertising, event calendar, okay, that's okay, shop local campaign, but decorations. There again, getting back to adding more decorations, so I think that they need to cut that back. Sorry about that, guys, but I think they need to cut that, I think they need to cut that back and just have advertising, event calendar, and shop local campaign. And I would be okay with five thousand on that. The rest, I think, we need explanations from these other people coming forward next time before we give the final approval. Do you guys agree?
I think I agree with Mr. Diego that I just need more detail.
Yes.
I just, I need some explanation of where the money's gonna go, not to micromanage it just because we're answerable to the people, the city.
Swallow itemization.
Yeah, just some kind of, like, that would be helpful.
And that's why I bring up so many questions on this, simply because of that, I think we have.
So to go back to your comment, to both your comments about building it into the budget, it's just not gonna work. We, the budget is as tight as can be, and you throw in twenty thousand dollars for new flooring, it's just not gonna happen. So this, this is the time, this is the place to get it done because this is, you know, it's, it's unspoken for. You put it in the, in the budget, at this point, any ongoing expense, we've moved out. In order to meet the ongoing and one-time expense, we've moved out travel, we've moved out office supplies, we've moved, we've moved things that are normal, everyday operational expenses into one time. If marijuana money goes away or sales tax plummets, then we have to figure out how to build travel and training and office supplies and just those extras that are normal, regular operations, our budget's too tight on ongoing. So that's why these kind of items come to you this way.
Wouldn't it be better to start doing some of that, to correcting that? I mean, in case marijuana and sales tax go down, because, I mean, it'd be silly to wait till the last minute and then we have to cut stuff.
See, and then if it goes down, then that's when we start talking about staff.
Because don't they, everybody that's in the department has given you a budget?
They do.
At the year, but what do they include in their budget, salaries now, there's nothing else included?
Salaries and operation, so, you know.
And what's part of the operation that any of that?
Office supplies, contract services, drug testing, training. I don't know, there's plenty, crime, criminal investigation supplies, I'm thinking of PD, training gear. For my office, it's like two hundred dollars for equipment in case our printer broke, breaks, but, you know, it's just those operational costs. It's nothing special above and beyond.
In answering to your, to your question, it seems to me, and I'm not sure if I'm wrong or not, but I would think that money for, that's a capital investment. Should that be under, come under capital improvements in our budget?
It should, but we have a finite amount of funds.
Right.
So we've split it out to the max, like Cheryl's stating, that ongoing, what we need to keep staff working, to keep everybody ongoing. And then there's one-time costs that we've taken out in case marijuana goes away, then training goes away. Those type of things that, that we need. If we put in twenty thousand dollars for flooring, that would go away. The fact that we have this, this money and Council has set up the resolution to go towards city projects, sixty-five percent toward city projects, that's helped us to.
Sure.
Right.
Upgrade our departments, to do things, to, to bring up the departments, to get them geared up.
I think the question is not so much that we're, we're questioning, you know, the twenty thousand dollars, and I guess, I was gonna ask Chief, is he still here?
Yes.
How much of the department will this twenty thousand dollar flooring, was that the entire?
No, no, that's, if you remember, that's gonna be the portion that we did not do when we moved in. So that's still left over from when it was an office for the school district. So that's the upstairs hallway, the conference room, two of the offices upstairs, the downstairs hallway, the EOC, and the bathroom.
So would you be going forward for some other flooring down the road, is that for?
That's all the flooring we'll need, other than when we do redo the EOC shower, which I'm trying to still get bids on, on doing that.
The what shower?
We have to have a shower facility and locker room downstairs for emergency operations.
Okay, and that's, that's.
That'd be the next project.
And that's not a big room, that, I know, it's not a huge, huge room.
No.
And then just one more example, the seventy-four thousand dollars for the exhaust removal system that was actually built into the capable budget for twenty. into the capable budget for 2022, but we needed more money to finish the Fox and space to create. So that absorbed that money. So we're like, all right, let's put it to marijuana.
And we agreed on that. We understood that very well when it came through.
But originally, yes, some of these things, yes, can go through capital. We have a line item called municipal building, I don't remember, renovations. And we try to put money in there, but again, because of Fox, we had to take away that 74,000.
Well, like I said, I think the biggest thing now is that these people that we not want them to do presentation to when we, to us, when we, on the night that we approve or disapprove or whatever.
So what I've done is sent an email to all of them, telling them that we want their requests by mid-October for the following year, so that way they could all come and present. And that way, it gets built in the fourth quarter marijuana allocations next year. Well, at the end of this year, so that we know, they know what they have available for 2022 exactly the way we know in our budgets. But we want to get them all on the same timeline, because if you recall, last quarter, Arts and Culture presented their budget. So they're all sporadically presenting, and we're doing our best to get them all on the same timeline, so that you can hear from all, every single group, and then it's fluid.
I can agree with that. Now, the thing that I would like to see maybe, is maybe for the next quarter, before the next quarter comes around, I think that maybe the department should give a wish list. Before the next go-round, way before. Like, let's say, probably April or May, if, I mean, it's just a wish list, just so that word, have some idea what might be, we might be facing.
And this, this is kind of the process we have going here. It's every quarter, we ask department heads for their, their wish list, and we try and manage to get them supplied. I don't know if, if, that sounds like Council wants involved in that?
Not so much involved, it's just for us to know a little ahead of time. I mean, the explanation, like I said, that were given to us, you know, were tonight. Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Any other questions?
May I ask a little?
Sure. Quick question. This is related to this. It's not so much a question, per se. But it seems to me that Trinidad is in an enviable situation in the sense of, Mayor, we were talking beforehand, you were mentioning how the budget's grown appreciably. And I think, you know, it's in no small part due to marijuana revenues. And we have to balance that, the rules of government, how much rainy day funds we can manage, and then, you know, projects. I think it's really nice to see these dollars be spent on hard projects, because you can point to something and say, hey, that's where that money is. I think that's super positive. I've been saying this several times, I think it's just something that we really should, really try to focus on. We keep talking about if, that if this goes away, maybe we see when this goes away. Because federal legalization, so many things threaten that. I still think we should make a really cohesive effort to find someone that can forecast the challenges that the industry will face when federal legalization occurs. Help them get over those hurdles of interstate trade. I mean, there's got to be someone to reach out to, even if we spend real dollars, because, like I mentioned, we can point to, as a council, we can point to, hey, that was that study we commissioned using those dollars to help the industry into that new era of, of doing business. I think it's something that we should really look at. It's a, understandably, it's a hard ask. I don't think there's like a place you can Google and say upcoming marijuana challenge resource center. But certainly, there's some...
You know, kind of one thing, you know, if it does become open throughout the entire country, you know, we're going to see a loss, and we've anticipated some of that already. Now, how much that loss is going to be, 25 is going to be 50%, and I think I forget what you anticipated. But here's the thing that I'm looking at, is that, that's where I think that our recreationals, component that we have, that we're building on, and we're hoping between all the recreational amenities that we'll have and the tourism that we'll have, will start to take over some of that loss. And that's what I think that we need to contemplate doing. And that's why I know that Mr. Chatterley is working hard on trying to do something in the recreational department, so that when this thing does start to slow down, that recreational part starts to meet what we lost.
And if you recall, I'm very conservative in my budgeting approach. We do not use marijuana dollars for ongoing.
No.
So if marijuana does, if, when, if it does, we shouldn't be hurting. It's not going to, like, okay, we have to lay off 45 people. That, that won't happen, because we're extremely careful.
I guess, I guess my point, though, is that we will, we will see a loss at federal regulation. I mean, state-to-state's legal. However, that can be mitigated, because if we did the planning ahead of time, these, these facilities that are grow facilities, and I don't have the understanding of the marijuana industry, but these, these grow facilities can start supplying other states, ready-made, with a cheaper price, and they can export that, if we've done the research ahead of time to, to help facilitate that. That's my point. Then we don't have to, we don't necessarily have to incur a loss, is my...
Could, could I just say that no one knows what that will look like? Right? And if there is federal legalization, I don't mean to go down this rabbit hole, I'm sorry, but it's a very valid point. But if there is federal legalization, there's still going to be a demand, there's still going to be a market. And I really don't think there's any serious talk of federal legalization right now, not, not that I know of. But if there is, then there will be a demand for export, and there's going to be a whole slew of federal regulations now. I mean, exactly what New Mexico is doing is they get into the retail marijuana game. There will be federal regulations that we will have to analyze and digest. And of course, you know, there will be a lot of people in the industry who do the same thing.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
And I'm sorry, we probably have gone down the rabbit hole at this point. But would it have to be federally, federally legalized to have state-to-state commerce?
Yes, I think so, in order to be able to have interstate commerce. Interstate commerce is governed by the federal government, you know, constitutionally. So I think so. But also, I, I want to say this conversation has come up a number of times. But it's like, we don't know what New Mexico is necessarily going to look like. Like, how many marijuana stores are going to be in Raton, in other communities along, you know, and what exactly Texas is going to do, Arizona. I would love to be the consultant who would get, you know, money to come in and kind of speculate about all things marijuana in one of the states, maybe on being somewhat facetious. I don't mean to seem snarky. But it's just, it's really hard to know and to see and to forecast. And I think one of the things we can do is to try to deal with it, but also kind of increase the marketability of marijuana in Trinidad. But, rabbit hole, I'm sorry.
Here's what I'm, like I said, and I'm going to go back to, I really believe that Trinidad right now is on the verge for more diversification of our economy, with mine coming. You know, the railroad is going to come back, and they're going to have some additional employees. You know, and so I think that we got to be careful that we don't start thinking that marijuana is the answer to all. Because we know it's going to taper off, level off, whatever it is down the road. But I think the diversification and the direction that we're headed with, in Trinidad, with recreation and maybe some other things that, and that's where our economic development and our planning department, that's where they come into play, to try to boost our economy in not only marijuana, not only other things that we've got going on, but to bring in additional industry. I think that's really what, you know, when I'm gone in a couple of years, that that continues, that we continue to try to find a diversified economy, a stronger economy. That's what we, that's what we really need to look at.
Okay, so one more note, just fun facts. In 2019, the sale...
Make it fun.
Marijuana sales were $58 million. In 2020, marijuana sales, $72 million. And 2021, 66 million. So 2020 is just a fluke, I don't, I just don't understand. But each year, it, you know, we haven't reached the ceiling in marijuana sales, until maybe now. But yeah, 62 million dollars in sales, and we yielded 4.7 million in marijuana sales tax. That's just, those are incredible numbers to me.
And they, I don't know what the numbers were, but I think it was in the last newspaper, today or yesterday, about the marijuana revenue in the state. I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, 2.2 billion dollars.
Yeah.
I was going to send you that article.
That was pretty high. Thank you, Cheryl. All right, let's go on to the American Rescue Plan Act use of funds, I think, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you know, we received, we will receive 2.06 million dollars through the American Rescue Plan Act. We've received our first tranche of 1 million and change. And we've also had discussion of the rules that have come down, and we have final rules, and through those rules, one option is to have premium pay to, for employees. So what you have before you is an ordinance laying out the use of 1 million of that American Rescue Plan Act money for premium pay for city employees. We've kind of looked at it staff-wise in tiered levels, depending on, you know, the impacts. Whereas, you know, public safety, police and fire were out in it. Our other employees were out in it, but not as direct. So we've kind of have a tiered approach on, on the amounts. And also, a quarterly approach, depending on whether you worked through that two years or if you just worked half a year or a year or so, broken out in quarters. So this resolution puts before council, it's actually not a resolution, it's an ordinance for expenditures that would come before you of a million dollars toward, toward premium pay for city employees who worked through the pandemic. We, we offered up a million dollars to our businesses, and our employees worked through that. So I think it's only right that you do that for employees. And it's, it's not only physical, you know, sickness and everything they had to deal with, but also the mental health. With that, I'll answer any questions.
I think, you know, we had a good discussion on that the other day, and I think everybody, I'm not sure if you guys have had any changes or thoughts, but I think that...
Just, you know, the majority, what I researched this last week, is that they categorized and prorated in three categories. They had the premium pay for essential workers as number one, and then the infrastructure for water and sewer was very important. And then the broadband width was kind of, it still takes a precedent, but it's, it's not on the top priority list of a lot of the cities that I've researched in Colorado. But the premium pay for essential workers was number one.
Thank you.
No, just got anything for the council? With all the stress we had to...
Karen? Karen, did you have any questions on this ordinance?
No, she's...
Are you muted?
She's waving off, no question.
Okay.
Mike, what's the amount that we are expecting? What's our other tranche going to be?
The same, 1 million. I think it's 2.2 million, $60,000. I don't have that figured, but it's about a million, million, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's so if we want to do broadband and other things, we can still...
That's a possibility, as, as we research that, and with the state and the federal and everybody trying to, you know, bolster up the funds for broadband, I think we're in a good position to match funds and do whatever we can to use that money.
I think, I think this is a good idea. I strongly support, especially the law enforcement, fire department people have, people who are going into people's homes to, you know, check the gas lines and things like that, absolutely, I think. It's a good idea, I think it'll serve it.
I know I have no questions. It's a great idea. Show me the money.
I have no questions. I do want to say I share Councilman Ogletree's position. I really support it. I think it's fantastic that we have the opportunity to do it, especially for the emergency responders, and also just for everybody that put such effort into making sure that we could still function as a city. I do, in the position we're in, I think it's easy to forget that in those early days of the epidemic, you know, it was a, you did kind of feel like you were taking your life in your hands, stepping out of the house. So I'm just, I'm grateful we have the ability to recognize that in a, in a way that people will appreciate.
Well, you know, I know that council, or that, you know, staff had recommended originally, and it was a little bit less than mountain, and Council decided to up it, up the ante, which I think was a great deal. I think that was a good thing that we did. I fully support it, just to let you know. And you're talking about the broadband, and just to let you guys know, last night I just happened to listen to C-SPAN, and there was a federal, I forget what the guy's name was, I have it at home because I got it written down. But anyway, he was the broadband guru from the federal level. And he was talking about that there's, it's up to the states to finalize everything, but I think they're only talking about a 25% match for the, for the infrastructure dollars for broadband that's going to be out there. So I think, and there's some other information that I wrote down, I'll bring forward at the proper time. But it was interesting, listen, I didn't catch the entire program, but I caught about an hour of it. And it was questioning by some of the congressmen to this guy. But it was interesting that I think they were talking about a 25% match, which is interesting. And of course, with this money that we have, it puts us, like you were saying, in a good position to be able to do some of this stuff. Any other questions on the American Rescue Plan Act use of funds? Okay. Item 3, Los Angeles County Emergency Telephone Authority IGA Amendment Request. Before we get started, one of the concerns I had is that supposedly we are supposed, I guess that we're supposed to have a city director that's participating in some of these meetings that we've not been participating in. Whose job was that supposed to be and why have we not done that?
Charlie, you want to come forward and talk about the 911 and our dispatch?
Yeah, so this is just to make sure that that center down, the Justice Center is fully operational. There, when we went in there for an inspection here, it's back in the fall, I guess, there was some of the equipment that wasn't working. And this will require my communication director to go down and at least once a month, fire it up, test it, make sure if he's working. So that's what's going to happen, and now it's written in the contract.
But my question is, is according to the information that we got, that the communication director has not been attending the meetings.
No.
Is that correct?
So, so yeah, she was attending the meetings, and we're very short-staffed, so I asked that she could attend through Zoom, which they approved for this next meeting.
Okay. But anyway, that's what I read into the information, so let's see, if anybody else has any questions, go ahead, Mr..
Maybe for Charlie or James, Charlie, if, if there's an emergency in the emergency center, let's say you have a 9/11 call that center that, that goes down, could you deploy backup laptops and transport them and set them up in another building? You know, to access, so 9/11 dispatchers could connect and able to relocate the center with private networking and... center with private networking and Wi-Fi?
So what we're currently working on, actually the fire chief, I think he was here, isn't he? Fire chief and I are currently working on, we're, we're going to bring forth in our, we're gonna go out of the fleet fund, we're gonna do a mobile trailer that will just be exactly that.
Just like that?
It'd be something that we could, we could put those dispatchers in, we could, as a command at a scene we can use and that will function as a dispatch center should it need, should maybe both centers go down or whatever predicament we gave.
I'm sure that's happened in other.
It has happened and we don't have a command post right now. So that's something, we had something that would, would work, but we sold that here recently and now him and I are working on getting that together and bringing it forth.
Okay. And that was interesting, I know you attended some of those meetings at the county like I have about the emergency management. And I guess in this particular case, if there's an emergency of some sort, that's where this piece of equipment would be useful.
Right, and we'd be able to take this to the scene and have those capabilities.
Right.
Plus it would also serve if dispatch went down in PD or the redundant center, we have this as a backup as well.
Well, it does make sense that, I guess every so often, you're gonna be using the redundant.
Yeah, so it'd be tested once a month, month and monthly going forward.
Karen, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I don't.
No. No questions.
No questions here.
No questions? If they have anything else. So the, the big thing is about the inspections, Charlie? Who's, who does the inspections? Is that the?
So the community.
The city, the city, the communication city director?
Yes, yes. The communication director will go down there once a month. We formulated a checkoff list that then she will, will, will report to the nine-one-one board that showed that everything was working or whatever problem she ran into.
Does, does that person keep a log of all these inspections or are they?
We're, we're gonna, we actually made a form, a checkoff list. Then she will go and just check the boxes, is it working, not working, whatever, and then we will submit that to the board.
Okay.
That's everything, telephone, radio equipment, what are all the solutions?
Yeah, it's just a, a checkoff list of the entire center.
Well, it's, it's good to know that it's not costing us any money because we're gonna get reimbursed.
Well, nine-one-one is actually paying for the equipment.
Right.
In that center.
Right. Okay, on to item four, discussion regarding naming of public property. Mr. Valentine, I couldn't quite guess what that was all about, other than the information to understand how we go, we go about naming.
So here recently, the, the questions come up to, to do naming in memory of. So I, I did some research and this appeared to come up in two thousand thirteen, it was actually a resolution formed and the policy laid out for the procedures in naming public property, actually, public buildings, parks and other public facilities. So I just wanted to put this before council and get some, some guidance. There are several categories spelled out in four dash two. It was my understanding and I hate to toss the family here, Mr. Fernandez, in, in naming North Lake Dam in memoriam. So there's some categories, but it requires a petition. There's, there's a procedure laid out for naming, planning and zoning and variance commission is the naming committee that it's taken to and then with the superintendent or the director that repart, department responsible for the building or whatever it is. But petitions have to be circulated to do that. So just looking for direction from council is North Lake is it, so we could start the process.
So you're saying a person that's a major contrib- contributor over the past few years could also be named?
Yes. Should, you know, should these procedures be followed?
Right.
And it goes through the, the petition process and then Planning, Zoning and Varens Commission goes forward. I know they've had it several in the past and were denied, basically because, I don't know why they were denied, but they were, but then, then this policy was laid out so that we, we have something to follow.
So there's a panel that has to pre-prove it, then we prove it as council?
Uh, the panel, the, the naming committee is defined as the Planning, Zoning and Varens Commission. So it would go before them first.
First the petition.
And to do this.
And the complete ordinance.
Mm-hmm. Karen, do you have any questions concerning that?
No, bitch, Mayor. But anyway, you know, I think you and I, Mayor, were the only ones on council years, at least three years ago, when this came up to council about renaming a street by the golf course. And I was adamantly opposed to it because research wasn't done as to why that street was named after who it was named after. And I'm in, I'm of the mindset that before we make these changes, that the process has to be clear for number one and we have to have a consensus across the board that it's a good thing to change the name. I tried for a long time to find out why Nolan Drive was named Nolan Drive and there was no history on it. But I wish we would have had this information years ago before we changed the name of that street, because I think it would have made things turn out a little differently than it did. But I'm, I'm definitely for this procedure.
The reason they named it Nolan Drive was, Fire Chief, Chief Nolan was named for that. He had worked fifty-two or fifty-three years for the city of Trinidad. And that's why they had that little strip area done for it. And then when I was on a council, we had some issues with a, with a street named up here for, can't think of his name, but it's just a small street there. I think you were on the, on there, up on Fifth or Sixth Streets, that one of those.
Oh, yeah.
You remember that?
There's one, there's Huth Lane.
That's it.
Huth Lane.
We were, what, what I had talked to you about and what we had talked about was, when I was on council before, was to actually name the filter plant after Jim Fernandez at, not instead of the lake, but the filter plant. And that's what we had, you know, had thought about. But at that time, we didn't have any guidance and stuff and it, and it didn't, it failed. But I would be in favor of looking at doing that for Mr. Fernandez because he contributed a great deal to the city of Trinidad and I, I think naming a big lake would be a big issue, but I think the filter plant would be something that we could do because it is a city and he actually did a lot of work there. And I think that would be really a good deal for him.
That's true. Karen?
I read the whole thing through because I was so fascinated that we had an ordinance this long about naming things. It was like, this must've been quite a controversy.
The last one, that was a controversy.
So the only question I had about it was why Planning and Zoning Varens Commission is the na- the only people who are on the naming committee? It seems like to me, I would want someone on there as well from a historical point of view, maybe from the Trinidad Historical Society or something. I just, I, I'm sure that was what you all decided and I'm sure it was a good decision, but I kind of, going forward, think wouldn't we want more points of view than just planning and zoning on that, a naming committee?
I agree with Karen with the historical aspect of that. It just ties into what Trinidad has going on with tourism and travel. You've got to be able to speak on the name of the person in a positive light by going a little, little rich history about, um, who we're naming that.
Um, I agree with Councilwoman Ogle Tree there on that. It seems really well thought out. I, I also shared the questioning as to why P and Z would be the sole decision makers. Not, not that I have any doubt of their ability to make that decision, but I thought it might be wise to include an elected official in, in that capacity. Just my thoughts and we're having open discussion, so.
Good one. I'm agreeing with you guys as well. And, you know, you mentioned about the filtration plant. The other thing, possibility would be like maybe either the gas department or the water department, the building, you know, there, there's some options here that they call and they could say Fernandez, you know, Water Department building. I mean, there's some options. I think these need to all be, I think the lake is a stretch. I really do believe that because, yeah, that's, it's, I think it's just a stretch.
Well, and through the petition process, well, backing up to having elected official, the naming committee only brings it forward to the elected officials to vote. So I think it would be, I don't know, it wouldn't be really quasi judicial, but you, you kind of mix them, mix them there. In the petition, we have to identify which building, we have to say why. There's, there's, there's special criteria for the statement, the description and information that shall be included, the proposal including the name.
Well, I think the way to handle that, Mr. Valentine, would be to give us the options. You know, is it gonna be a building downtown? Is it gonna be the filtration plant?
Well, see, that's, that's where, if, if, here we are talking about it, but it still has to come from outside. So you're, you're kind of predetermining that, that you want to do that. So I guess I'm, I'm looking toward kind of direction that this is something we should move forward on.
I think so. Okay. That, that, you know, I think we're all in agreement there that, you know, to just follow the process that's laid out.
Okay.
Okay, item five, Arkansas River Power Authority appointments, operating committee and board.
So since our utility electric, utility director moved on, we, he, he was on the ARCA board along with Carlos Lopez. And so with him moving, moving on, we now need another person. There's a two-person from each community to be on the actual board. And then they also have an operating committee and that's generally the line supervisor or somebody who actually, the operating committee is boots-on-the-ground kind of guys that talk about the, you know, the inner workings of distribution and power plants and everything. But I think council needs to consider appointing somebody or how we move forward with requests or.
Do we, do we have anybody, said, if you could have somebody with boots on the ground out there, is there somebody in the department right now that would kind of at least maybe pick up?
From the operating committee?
Yeah, the operating, and if we ever, if we do get a different director at some point, we, you know, whatever we decide to do. But I think that that might be, that would be my thought because they have the expertise behind it, we don't. Any questions?
No, I agree with the Mayor Rico. That's pretty much what we have to do before we can.
Unless we can convince Michelle Miles to come back and do that.
Yeah, it should be great.
No, I don't have any other ideas.
Any questions?
No questions.
I agree with the mayor.
Yeah, okay. Okay, on to item six, Parks and Sports, Sports and Recreation Director Report. You know, the reason why we have you here tonight is, when I gave my State of the City address, we got hammered pretty hard that we were not doing anything for the youth of the community.
The lesser.
The lesser was got me pretty upset and, but that really bugged me. But nevertheless, and so I, I asked Mr. Valentine to bring you to this meeting tonight so that you could let us know what you are doing this summer for the youth of the community. What are your plans?
Well, Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to be here, see if I can help. I'm just gonna give everybody a list, if you can take one and pass one down. These are the programs that we're running. Of course, as you guys know, in two thousand twenty, we were completely shut down.
Right.
In two thousand twenty-one, we were able to do two programs, but under restrictions. That was baseball with masks and then our girls volleyball program. And then you had the theater of parents sending their kids because there was no vaccination available for children. But this year, we started where we always start our programs in November, December, with K through second and third and fourth grade basketball. We had sixty-nine kids in K through second. Third and fourth, we had seventy-one boys and girls playing that one and we're getting ready to start our fifth and sixth program. And we'll have four girls teams and five boys teams from children from here in the surrounding area. So we're, we're coming back. The kids are coming back, programs are picking up, participation is picking up. So, and not only to say that, we do help nonprofit groups, like we partner with the Southern Colorado Family Center. I have a budget that lets me show movies so they can show movies to the kids in the community. We help with that. We partner with the library, they bring their kids up to our place. So the programs are coming back and of course, the pool will be open. So I, I think we're right on track of getting back to where we need to be with, with the children and our programs.
No, I just, something just came to mind here. You know, there are a lot of, of the youth, and I, I see there's please to all of these, to the, to these youth groups. And there are probably some that maybe want to participate, but they don't have that forty bucks or thirty bucks or whatever.
We have a scholarship fund and we'll let them come in and we'll pay for it.
That's what I was gonna, how much money do you have in that scholarship fund?
Um, well, it goes off a sponsor check that's put aside and if they come in and can't afford it, we just help them that way.
But how much money do you have in that?
I'm not certain.
Any idea approximately?
Hmm, probably three thousand dollars.
You know, I think that's.
Have we, have we ever turned anybody away?
No, no one has been turned away. And if they call and say they can't afford it, it's not even a question. Bring him up, he's playing, she's playing.
And that's what I was gonna say, that, that's where I think that maybe, maybe our next go-around of marijuana funds, that we do some money towards a scholarship fund to try to get these kids and I think to, to participate.
Yeah, we, we fully agree with you, Mayor. We don't want to turn any kid away.
Right.
So we, we kind of start that on a little basis.
Right.
But no kid gets turned away from playing any in our programs.
Yeah, I would not be opposed to giving money to a scholarship fund to, to increase that if we have to, for these, for the youth of our community. Because, you know, this guy thought that you weren't doing anything really.
Well, no, we're, we're going.
And, you know, I, we afterwards, you know, we understood as council that those of us that were there, that we knew that COVID, you know, played a big part in what you've been able to, to do over the last couple of years.
Yeah, but as soon as we got the okay to do it, we started working and, and throughout that whole time, we did a good job of getting our facility ready. We redid our gym, we res- painted the pool, we, so that we could be ready for the children when they did come back.
Any questions?
No, just every time I get an email or a call from the community center from you or Stacy, I, I've got a program that's starting, whether it's kickball or for girls or basketball, football, I, I air it religiously.
Oh, no, we hear you. We, and thank you for that.
I'm sorry.
Because that helps, no, we, we love hearing it.
I try to encourage that because, well, you know, when I was growing up, we didn't have a lot of those programs. We went to Centennial to play basketball or we went to the college to play or Central Park. A lot of, we had the Little League baseball programs, but not much for, you know, kickball and volleyball and stuff like that. So this is, this is really good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we encourage that. And we're, we're doing our best.
And we're doing our best and we're looking forward to a good summer with baseball and the pool so that we can try to get some normalcy back and these kids active again.
But when you find only eight registrants and you have to fill the team of 10 or 11 or 12, it's pretty hard to have, you know, some proactive participation and leagues forming.
Yep.
So, and yeah, the last couple of years.
Yeah, the last couple of years was really tough.
But like you said, we're on the upswing now.
We're on the upswing.
Ms. Gregor, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Mr. Velasquez, thank you for what you do over there. I know you run some really great programs and we have had nothing but accolades from you and, about you and your staff. I have a question. When you're talking about sponsor, are you talking about businesses in Trinidad sponsoring these teams and that money is what you use to pay for the kids that don't?
Yeah, they sponsor a team and get their name on a jersey or a baseball uniform and then that money is used to sponsor the kids. Not that you see it, but they get to play.
Okay. Well, I would be more than happy to sponsor a couple of teams through my business. I think that's a great idea. I'd like, I'd like to have what Mr. Velasquez put out on some type of news release because I got the feeling that people were, that were at the state of the city address, really believed that there's nothing going on at the community center. And I know it's not true, but I'd really like to have it out there for the public to see in response to what happened that night. It's an injustice to our staff that that, that's the people.
Yeah, it really, yes, I was surprised as anyone to hear that. And even during the day, the adults come up for pickleball. Like three, four days a week, that gym's full in the morning. So, that's taken off.
It was just a handful of people that night.
Has he been on your program?
Marty?
Not yet. There's an indictment.
Which you are. Looks like that's called. I didn't meet Stacy. But yeah, call the radio station, come up. You got it.
No, Marty, I know you, I know you do a good job because we're in and out of there for different reasons, but.
Yeah, and then in March, we are finally fully staffed again and we're going to start opening up Sundays, so they have Sundays to come up now and enjoy the community center too. Because that's the one thing we're lacking, was a lot of open gym programs and stuff.
Can I call you tomorrow to set up an interview next week?
Yep, you can.
Mayor's done it. The interview shall be done.
I'm sorry I missed that discussion. I had a death in the family, I wasn't able to be at the state of the city. But one of the things that people have complained to me about is that there are no after-school programs for kids. And I'm wondering if there is any coordination with the schools to give things, kids things to do in the afternoon. And again, I wasn't there, so I didn't hear the discussion.
Well, that is when all our programs run is after-school. That's when all the kids come. That's when they practice, that's when they play their games. And then there's, you also got the youth group, the youth center. They do a lot of after-school stuff.
They said that, but that's not really for.
What are they looking for? What kind of programs?
Basketball, volleyball kind of stuff. It may be that what those comments went to was when the community center was not functioning, when it wasn't active with people coming to the doors and that's what their frustration was. And then with the youth center, it was more about, it was more focused on younger kids. So, this is for more like pre-teen, middle school kids, if there were any programs that were directed toward them to keep them out of trouble in the afternoons, so.
Well, we have open gym times for them to come and enjoy the gym. And we have been getting a lot of teens on days that we don't have practice. The only thing is we have one community center. So, when we're having practices, the gym is kind of closed. So, maybe that's what they're saying, is there no access, like when we're, because we do deal with K through sixth grade. The schools provide the programs for seventh and eighth and up into high school. They provide those programs. But there is a group out there that doesn't play sports, that likes just to maybe other activities, maybe is what we need. I don't know.
Chess clubs or something, nerdy kids like me.
I had a chess club.
So, again, I'm sorry I missed the discussion, but I have one of those. I can barely play it, but.
I had a chess club after-school for 25 years.
Yeah, that would be great. So, anyways, that, I'm just reflecting back, that's the comments that I heard in the community.
There is a gentleman, he's starting up his rocket building thing for the kids again. He'll be at the community center.
I interviewed Brad Kirby today at the radio station and he talked about the Pottery River tubing and the model rockets. And he's sponsoring, he's one of the facilitators for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 12th. So, he came up and did a 20-minute interview too.
Yeah, so that will be starting up at the community center.
Is there, is there a coordination that happens between the center and the schools at all or are they just?
We, we send all our registrations to them, we contact them and let them know what's programs going on. And then we'll send our registration forms there to them so that they can get out with their information for the students. We do do that.
All right, thank you.
To piggyback off what Aaron said, what is the, what is the largest demographic of children playing sports? Is it pre-teens or super little kids or?
It's K through 12.
K through 12.
Yes, the largest demographic that we cover. Because like I said, the schools have programs for the seventh and eighth graders on them. They have junior high basketball, junior high girls volleyball.
What's, what's your manpower looking like for instructors and coaches and is it volunteer-based or what's the?
Yeah, it's mostly volunteer-based because I, I have a staff of four. So, and then we do a lot of the umpiring, the repping, the basketball games, my staff does. That seems like there's not a lot of people interested in doing that anymore. But we have volunteer coaches and it's a lot of the parents that sign their kids up that are interested in coaching their kids, they'll coach a team. So, it's mostly volunteer-based.
Okay. Aaron? Thanks for being here tonight. I was going to say, I really agree with the idea of a radio spot and that monthly, I think Karen said a monthly newsletter, although that can, that can be a lot of, a lot of effort to do a monthly newsletter because I think it'd be really important, you know, to do it in a very well, well-produced way. I mean, to just represent all the activities you do have. So, I mean, I think it'd be important to have that discussion ahead of time and make sure that it really puts the best foot forward and doesn't cause a burden that's not tenable going forward. That would be my comment to that. I did have a question. It's not so much related to the activities that occur, but it's just a thought that occurs to me. With, with volunteer staff, how are those people vetted for, you know, any issues for?
Being around children.
Oh, we'll bring, we'll bring them down to Donna to screen them if they're new people. Mostly they start coaching and they'll coach their kid through the programs, but any new person will bring, they fill out a volunteer application, same as the pool, and we'll bring them to Donna and they're screened.
Okay.
One quick question.
I have no more.
Healthy snacks, do y'all do, do y'all provide snacks for children for this, for these sports events or is that just something separate?
The parents bring snacks, the coaches will get with the parents and they'll set up a list and the parents take turn bringing snacks for the children.
You know, I want to take, take off from what you were talking about, how are these volunteers vetted to make sure they don't have a history in the background? Do they have any police background?
Yeah, that's what it is. It's a background check, just like you and I applied for a job.
Okay, good. The other question then, one of the things that, what about soccer? Is soccer offered or I know in the past, there's been big soccer, you know, for the younger kids. What's, anything happening in that area?
We've been getting a lot of calls on soccer lately, but apparently the AYSO has given it up. Those volunteers have given it up. But there is a group out of Pueblo or Springs that come down here, I guess they've had it the last couple of years, that are doing the program, but we haven't got any information from them on it.
Okay, I was just kind of wondering because that's one thing, it's not on your list here and I thought.
Nope, we've never done it because AYSO had always done it.
Oh, okay. Do you have any difficulties, because you said that sponsorships for any of the teams? Do you have any trouble getting sponsorships for teams?
No, not usually. Usually a business like, a lot of the businesses have grandsons or sons that are, their children are playing. So, usually what happens is they'll, their businesses will sponsor the team that they coach or that their grandson or child is playing on. It, I mean, without even asking them, do you need a sponsor? We don't even have to go look at.
And the reason why I say is, and that's going back to my original thing about, you know, through the marijuana funding, if you need money, if you don't have enough money for sponsorships, that's what you could utilize some of that money for as well. So, I think that would be a good thing. The other thing is trying to get the word out, other than like I said, you meeting with Eli, are you using our media coordinator to get some of this information up?
Can't say that I have.
Social media coordinator? The social media coordinator. Sarah Dixon, I think you.
Oh, no, I have met with her twice and we are in the process of getting all our information that we have now to this until she can get us up and running with the new website and stuff. So, yeah, I have met with her.
Because that's another way to get the word out.
Oh, no, we, we need that too.
I just want to say, Marty, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
I'll call you more, Marty.
All right.
Okay, council, do you have any other items, agenda items that you guys would like to bring forward in the next few weeks?
Ms. DeBonner?
No, not as of right now.
Ms. Gregor?
No, sir, not right now.
No, I just, instead of bothering Mike coming in to see, just an issue, on the weekends on Main Street, on Main and Commercial, especially Main Street, can we get a no parking sign put up where the streets divide there? They're going to Balla Lunas and those places and they're parking and they're taking traffic lane out completely.
Yeah.
And I mean, it, it almost caused a problem the other night with me, there's some guy coming around there, but they just keep parking all the way to almost to the stoplight. But if we could put a no parking sign there.
I agree with you there.
Yeah. That's it.
A couple of times we've talked about doing some kind of an analysis or coordination of our boards and commissions and I wonder if we can have a work session about that to talk about that or find out what's happening with that because I think it's really important kind of to tag along with Councilman Williamson said, to make sure that everybody's on board with the same messaging and all going in the right direction and not, you know, this group's doing this project and then this other group finds out about it and it's, that's happened too many times and I feel like it's a waste of money and inefficient and ineffective. So, I, I think we need to do that. I think it would be good in the context of bringing on the Main Street manager to have that person look at all those things and maybe propose some changes to what each commission is responsible for, if necessary. The other thing is, I'm wondering what's going on with the city website report that Chrissy Rogers is working on, if we're going to get a report on that because I'm still not happy.
There's a, Chrissy Rogers is no longer the person.
Okay. Who's doing that now?
She is helping us through the, we are.
Sarah Dixon, I think, is doing that.
Sarah's the media coordinator.
But she's also.
Chrissy Rogers is, is doing the website rebuild. She's vetted, I don't know how many providers, I can't think of the name right now, to, we've got a request for proposal that's going to go out to companies that actually build the website for us. She, her, her task was to go through, see what we had, see where we can go. And then there's a list of six or seven that she has vetted and Audra has a request for proposal to go out from her. And that's, we just met last week with her and she, she updated us on all that, so.
I just.
It's, it's working through it and it'll, it'll take probably three months to build.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I just think it's a very lost opportunity to communicate. When you go to our, our events calendar, there's absolutely nothing on there. We could have basketball, we could have meetings, we could have, it's, there's nothing on the calendar and, and that's just not good. So, I think those are the biggest things right now.
You know, one thing that, and I think Sarah, not Sarah, but what's her name, Chrissy Rogers was at the tourism board meeting last week and I guess she is bowing out of doing anything for tourism on the, on the website, so.
I met with her, not with her, excuse me, when we, when she was listening, feedback. So, I'm sorry to hear that she's not going to be involved in that.
Sarah Dixon is going to help her for the tourism part of that, I guess, I understand.
All right, thanks.
There you go. Amy?
I would like to see the golf course in action at some point, maybe have somebody come in and tell us. You really want to go there? You know what, I don't want to go there, but we've got kids and we've got all these amenities, we have friends who golf and they keep saying, but they keep saying that the kids won't have nothing. But we have a lot of amenities to get kids out on the golf course, you know, so maybe we can get something going.
Aaron?
Some kids' exercise is just with their fingers. It's not like when we grew up.
It'd be nice if we could get a way, find a way to get these kids out, you know, in the field, doing other things other than staying at home, playing video games and watching television, I think.
You're right.
Other than that, I think that's it. Mr. Valentine?
Just, just as a heads up, we will have another, probably our next work session, a discussion on committing funds as we come toward the audit and we've built up some more rainy day funds and reserves that we're going to have to commit. So, that will be a discussion at an upcoming work session very soon.
Okay. All right, the work session is adjourned. Stay warm, people.